We have already called our meeting to order before this, but we would like to start this official meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, do we have any public comments before we get started?
No.
Seeing none, we will move to the approval of minutes. We have minutes from Monday, October 1st. Are there any comments or corrections?
Yes, I found one.
Okay.
One, line 36.
Okay.
I think it's supposed to say conform, not confirm.
Yes, yes, I think you're absolutely right. Thank you.
That's all I, uh, yeah.
Good catch.
Anything, Lee?
I was absent.
Oh, you were absent. Anything, Harold or Casey?
The only thing I saw was on page three, and I don't know if this is something legal written because it's an old text, but right here it says on line three to four, it says, authorize the chairman to execute any documents which may be necessary to.
Yeah, that was the legal.
Okay, that's legal.
Yeah, yeah.
That's the legal stuff, yeah.
Okay. Any other comments, Harold?
No.
Kathleen?
Under the new business, the Whipple House lease, I.
Up what page?
Page four, nineteen and twenty.
Okay.
Further discussion followed in what was determined that to revise the win at least it would be necessary to have a new warrant article voted on.
It may be.
Yeah, I was gonna say, how do we?
I think we discussed it as a possibility, but I think maybe rather than would be.
Would be.
Okay.
So that would, Wendy, that's line.
Yeah.
Oh, you got it, nineteen.
And anything else, Kathleen?
Nope.
Casey?
I wasn't there.
You weren't there. Oh, that's right, we did have a.
We went off together.
Okay. In that case, is there a motion to approve the minutes of October 1st as amended?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second? Further discussion? All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
No vote. No vote.
Okay.
Just so the public knows, we're only supposed to use abstaining legally that I just researched for conflict of interest issues.
So two noes.
Two no votes and three yays. Okay, thank you. We're gonna have to be retrained now.
So confused.
Just been doing research.
Okay, consent agenda, and just for the public's information, we have signed, because we had a little extra time, we signed these, the manifest, just before the meeting started. So for the week of October 1st, the accounts payable was $289,183, and the payroll was For the week of October 9th, payroll was $18,531. Okay, department heads. Anne, you're back on again.
I'm sorry, I didn't get to get.
Parks and Rec.
We have an estimate to get some heat into the booster club.
Now, why would you need heat in the booster club?
I didn't need it.
You have not.
I know, there was something.
Yeah, no kidding. So, what is the situation? Can you enlighten us?
Um, the downstairs, there's no heat at all down there.
Oh.
So we're unable to use that at all.
Okay.
That's why in the past there's been problems with vikes freezing.
Yes.
And stuff, so I've had people come in and we've done little fixes here, you know, put stuff up. But we're looking now to actually get heat.
Okay.
More children, more space. If we have heat down there, we can actually use downstairs.
Mm-hmm.
And let the kids down there.
Okay. What would you use downstairs for? What?
Well, there's two sides.
Yeah.
That have a sports and an ice and crafts.
Okay.
And the middle is open.
Okay.
So we could use that. It's a cement floor.
Yeah.
You can do chalk, you know, games like that.
Yeah.
So that we could actually do some stuff if it's, you know, snowing too yucky to get outside.
Yep.
They could play smaller games.
Okay.
Because there's room down there.
Mm-hmm.
You could split them up by ages, you know, have little big, different games like that. But right now there is no heat down there, so we're looking to get.
So what is, can you tell us what the heat would be?
They're putting more vents in off the furnace.
Oh, it's the same furnace you're just.
Because he said the furnace is, we have a really good furnace is what he said. It's a lifetime guarantee. It just isn't being utilized correctly.
There's no circulation.
Yeah.
That would be a problem.
The vents, it's supposed to go.
Part of it is closed, but it doesn't.
Yeah.
It's always been like that?
And I know we've had problems with frozen pipes on more than one occasion down there.
Yeah, I don't, as long as I've been here, it's been like that. I don't know what issue happened before.
Now, where's the budget for this? The $7,429, is that out of the building fund?
Yeah.
Capital reserve.
Capital reserve?
Yeah.
Okay.
Anne, how about the big door? The big door that goes outside, is that insulated now or?
It's a big metal door. It's not, it's, it's a thick door.
Okay. It's still the one that slides?
No, oh, no, 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 no.
Oh, okay.
There are two metal doors that open that way.
Okay.
I've only been there in the summer, so.
Yeah, no, the sliding thing isn't the doors now. It's two metal doors.
Okay.
The only thing I have to say is, I thought the contract was pretty detailed, that I hope this could be, this could be brought a little more polished because this needs to be kept on file, so down the road, if something happens.
We know what's been done.
We know where is, where everything is.
You want to show us where we're gonna put office.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, yeah. And this is, this is just my personal thing. This is another case where a Band-Aid crotch was used.
In the past.
In the past.
And paying for it now.
And now we're paying for it once again.
Absolutely. Well, well pointed out, yes.
I just have one question. Maybe it wasn't to purview yet, but have, did you look into like, for instance, like heat pump type of situation with the federal incentives? I only, I only say this because the fire department has a heat pump.
I brought, I brought the same person in to come see it, and he said he would not do it until I get everything, all the walls and everything insulated. So basically, he said, I'll give you the name of somebody that does insulation, call me later.
Well, the only reason I ask is to segue into that is in the future, if the town goes towards solar, wouldn't it be beautiful to heat your buildings off?
Yeah.
Right, it would be.
It's something to think about in the future when we're all along.
Yep.
The future?
Yeah, I did try.
Planning for the future?
You always.
What a novel concept. That's great. Okay, so the motion would be to accept the estimate of $7,429.79 from ACE Mechanical LLC for the necessary work to rectify the heat problem at the Booster Club and to have the expenditure be distributed from the Town Building Maintenance CRF.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion?
I think it's technically seventy-six cents, but that's, it's three cents.
Seventy-six cents? Oh, in the motion.
On the quote, it's seventy.
Oh, you're right. Okay. Seventy, thank you.
There's a small typo.
No, it is a little typo. It's seventy-six cents.
Three cents is three cents.
Okay.
We're pinching pennies.
There is a little.
Yep.
You made, you made the motion.
Okay, wait a minute.
Seventy-six cents, yes.
How, what do I do? amend the motion to reflect the change?
Yes, we're like, yes.
The change direction.
We got it.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of approving the motion for the heat ventilation for the Booster Club, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, good. Thank you. When are you gonna get that worked in?
He said he would do it with force no flaws.
Yep.
Okay. Next week?
I tried to make sure of that.
One doesn't, no, yes. Okay.
Pricey.
It does seem good, yeah.
For all of the amount of work.
Yeah. Okay, Public Works Director, Craig Moore.
All right, so, you all had a chance to review the.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
So, basically, the estimate went over to properly rebuild the road down beyond the bridge towards the transfer station and sewer plant.
Okay.
Took a lot more material than what we thought.
Okay.
What we estimated.
Okay.
So now it's, if you go down there, you'll see it's pitched the right way and everything's draining the right way, like, and it's gotta preserve the road down.
They did an amazing job. It looks great.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So it's, everything's right now, but we didn't know what the material was underneath the road until we actually ground it.
Yep.
It turned out to be pretty junky.
Okay.
So we hauled in over what it said here, a hundred and one tons of yards of material and fixed it.
Mm-hmm.
So it went over.
Mm-hmm.
And then the other part wasn't up Collin Street to pitch that road after they shimmed it.
Mm-hmm.
Took a little bit more, but that was only like $1,100 extra in payment.
Okay.
So I can add some money to the original PO. So that's the motion in front of you, if you have any questions.
Yes.
That does not include the need to pave the sidewalk. That's a separate project.
That is separate. They're gonna do that, I think, beginning of first week in November. They've been pushed, I've been pushed back by rain all this.
Yeah.
But I mean, the money, the money for that, is that included in this? Five thousand?
Well, that, we haven't paid for the sidewalks yet.
Okay.
So the, what, what did go over was the portion for Collin Street.
Okay.
Okay.
This is for the, this is for the extra.
Materials.
Materials.
Yeah.
Right, we put ledge back in to bring the road.
So it was done right this time and set this.
It's pitched right, ground right, and done right.
Okay.
It's got the right material.
No, it really does look nice.
Yeah. So it's, it's done right. We shouldn't, shouldn't have any problem with that door as long as we maintain it.
Right. And that's the key with our roads, is, you know, we're trying to get them all repaired correctly.
Correct.
So that going forward, maintaining them is a minimal cost.
Yes.
And this one had been on the list for a while, so.
Right, yeah, it was pretty bad.
Yeah, it was.
Pretty bad.
Okay, so I'm looking for motion to add $5,000 to the purchase order number 1806 to the GMI and add Ambrose aggregates to the PO with additional expenses to be expended from the Road Improvement CRF.
And the public should know PO is purchase order.
Purchase order, yes.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
A second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, Craig, thank you.
Wouldn't you like it, you have, now you've got your verbiage right?
This is fabulous.
So you don't have to wing it.
This is fabulous.
Sounds right.
Made my job so much easier.
Thank you.
Any other issues for department heads?
So is Charlie's update.
No. Is there any new business? I see nothing on the agenda.
Oh, yeah.
No, nothing. Old business, town administrator updates.
Your favorite part of the week, right?
Yes, part, yes.
Now, you get to be the talking head.
Yeah, for the next five minutes. Um, so we've, some updates from the department heads. This is our regular monthly, mid-month report. Uh, the library had 527 patrons visiting the library in September. They borrowed 806 items from the library and used 117 download audible audiobooks.
Wow.
The library offered four programs that were attended by six, 68 people.
Nice.
So a couple events are coming up at the library for the public to perhaps attend. Uh, they're offering knit-in every Thursday this fall from 6:00 to 7:00. The next session of adult rock painting will be held on Tuesday, October 23rd from 5:30 to 7:00. Teen night will be held on Friday, October 26th from 6:30 to 8:00. Book group will be held on Monday, October 29th at 7:00 PM. Halloween Storytime will take place on Tuesday, October 30th from 3:00 to 4:00 PM. And our quote, "The library is central to our free society. It is a critical element in the free exchange of information at the heart of our democracy."
And you know who that is, right?
No.
Barton Gregorian? Come on.
No.
I'm just kidding.
Who is it?
Yeah, I was gonna say, thank you, Lee.
He's the president of Carnegie Corporation.
Oh, Carnegie Hall?
Just teasing you.
Fire department had 37 calls, 20 for medical emergencies, 15 rescue fire calls and responded to two accidents with no service calls. Department continues their ongoing training with fire ground hydraulics EMS training for protocols regarding special need patients. Members of the department also attended a live fire training exercise in Holderness. As everyone knows, the new truck is in surfit, excuse me, service. People keep continuing to train on the engine. The annual apparatus evaluation was completed on engine one and ladder one. This one, the library, excuse me, the ambulance was out of service about two weeks ago. The problem was corrected by Liberty International in Manchester, and the truck's back. Annual air compressor maintenance service was completed. Emergency generator annual maintenance and fire alarm system maintenance were completed. The boiler was checked out from, for this winter. Front brakes on ladder one were replaced. Um, what else? Area and ground ladder testing was scheduled for the week of, this coming week, the next week, the 22nd. And they keep doing inspections and Buskey sent his reports to T E M S I S. Parks and Rec has a couple things going on. Halloween Kids Night Out scheduled for Friday, October 19th. That will be at the Booster Club from 6:00 to 8:30 and is open to all kids in grades K through five. The cost is $5 per child. Information is on Facebook. It also went out to schools and put on channel 20. Care to elaborate?
Well, that's the channel that I sent it to.
PPTV?
The P.
They had to change the channel.
It's 20 now.
Oh. What else would your kids be doing?
The one that scrolls the events, yeah.
I don't know what the kids would be doing. What else, what do you have for stuff going on?
They get snacks, we play Halloween games, they have, you know, they wear their costumes with pink little pumpkins and stuff like that.
Fun.
Yep.
So the after-school program continues to do well. There's 34 registered. Department average is about 24 each day. Anne would like to thank Jeremy Jaquith, who's head of the softball league that uses the field for getting the players together to volunteer to do the work.
Yay.
That's very cool.
Yep.
And Anne would also like to thank Bill Gothier from Thundercats for donating the paint.
Good job.
Wow. Thank you for your efforts.
Nice.
Uh, before we started recording, Selectred Sharps asked about how people can donate to the Save the Playground. People can go on to, or you can send a check to AARA or go to the town Facebook page?
No.
Save the Playground.
Parks and Rec.
ARA, Facebook page?
Yes, Facebook page.
Yep.
Or there is a Facebook page that just says Save the Playground.
Okay.
And there's the Ashland Park and Rec. There's a link to that on there as well.
That's what I need to point.
So tax collector collected $223,309, $29,885 in vehicle registrations, $8 in dog registrations and vital records were 123. The police department, for the months of August and September, these numbers are combined, 764 dispatch calls.
Wow.
248 incidents, 23 arrests, eight warrants, five accidents, 132 citations.
Wow.
And seven parking tickets.
Wow, yeah.
Department continues to do a great job following up on investigations with ongoing cases. The sergeant completed TASER instructor certification.
No comment.
Ashland PD was invited by the Holderness PD to participate in shoot, don't shoot training using the Primex simulator.
Cool.
The simulator puts the office in situations that are common to the profession. The training used to make us.
The officer.
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 Officer, excuse me. Uh, and the training was just to make us more vigilant and aware of the proper force to use to handle those situations.
Wonderful.
Chief likes to thank the Holderness PD. Chief Randall took on online training for EMS in the warm zone, which is provided insight to active shooter situations and mass casualty events.
What's the warm zone?
Means you could get shot at. It's a little more dangerous than the cold zone.
Oh. See, it's out of town.
It's an area within the building where EMS will go in to actually pull people out that are injured.
See?
I didn't, you didn't know that. I wouldn't have known either. Thank you.
And the training was all taken in part of the grant that the fire department got for their active shooter vests.
Oh, yeah.
Great, excellent.
So there's hot, warm, and cool, so hot would be.
Yeah, that's what the.
With the shooter. Warm is. Yeah, okay.
So, but it's a dangerous zone because you never know where the active shooter may transition through from there.
Yeah. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for asking the question.
That's good, because your rests are up, what, 37%? Something like that?
Yeah, whatever it is.
Okay.
Chief Randall and Lieutenant Olwick attended open house at the Ashland Elementary School, and that's one fingerprinting for parents was offered in volunteers interested in helping the school on field trips. They also attended school safety meetings. The townwide yard sale went smoothly without any problems. The department provided traffic control on Main Street, Riverside Drive, and Highland Street intersections. As a reminder, Trick or Treat National will be on October 31st from 5:00 to 7:00 PM. Remember, there's no parking on any street in Ashland from November 1st through May 1st. And as.
Shouldn't that be.
Isn't there a time?
Overnight parking.
I'm sorry?
There has to be a time.
There's no overnight parking.
Tony, do you have an overnight?
There's no parking.
2A and.
Oh, is that?
He didn't put a time.
Yeah, it's.
Well, that alludes to no parking at all.
Yes. Right, let's make it clear.
It's a time.
It's overnight parking, yes.
I think you're right.
Is it from midnight to something in the morning?
Yeah.
Don't park it. No matter what time it is, right?
Overnight parking is good enough.
I'll get back to you on that one. Okay, and please remember that car break-ins are crimes of opportunity, and as we recommended, that you lock your vehicles at all times they can be broken into.
Okay. Thank you. Project list.
Okay. The TAP grant, we're still waiting for the notice to proceed from DOT.
Any idea?
I haven't heard any, yeah.
Any timeframe?
No.
Next spring?
No, we don't have anything.
Like, we're just in suspended.
We're a little bit waiting for, waiting for the state, yeah.
Vernicue.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, we still have an estimated, which I think is in that signature file, you know, by the end of the year, but yeah, we're, we're DOT. The Thompson Street project, I did attend a meeting at Water and Sewer, the Water and Sewer meeting, and the commissioners agreed to move forward with the project. The Ashland Properties LW Packard Mill site, we approved that application to CFA for a feasibility grant, so that is moving forward. The outship, no real updates, you know, we're still hoping to get that done by the, by December to get reimbursement for our grant. The GIS map in that, CIA Technologies swung by the office last week and said they're able to move that project up to the end of this month.
Wonderful.
Yeah, that's, you know, they were, think of December last, a couple months ago. So Patty got all the town maps ready, and so the public is aware, once this moves forward, they're coming to take about three boxes of all of our information. So those records won't be at town office.
Okay.
So there'll be some timeframe, folks, if they come to the office for that, you might have to go, we might have to direct you to the Bell, oh, sorry, now the Bell, Gaffey County, Gaffey County Registry of Deeds.
Okay.
They're very helpful up there.
So if you need a copy of a deed, get it now, as I was saying.
Yeah, yeah, you gotta take a drive, yeah. So, the Whipple House, I had on here, we're gonna meet with the Ashland Historical Society about the lease. I think the board was gonna take a vote on whether or not to renew the lease. If not, that would automatically renew in November.
We have to warn them by November 30th.
Yeah, we need a meeting before then.
Yep.
To discuss the issues, yeah.
Do you have anything to add, David? Did you guys meet?
Our board will be meeting tomorrow.
Okay.
Okay, great.
Do you have any particular nights or times you wanna meet?
The biggest.
The problem is there are like 14 people, so.
Yeah, I know. It'll be hard.
I don't know how we're gonna do this. Should we do it as before our meeting starts? In November, the first, the first one in November? Start the meeting early?
We could certainly do that, if that's, works for your group.
What does anybody else think?
Wouldn't this be done during what we call a work session?
I mean, the problem is, there are like fourteen people, so...
Yeah, I know, it'll, it'll be hard.
Everybody.
I don't know, how are we gonna do this? Should we do it as before our meeting starts? In November, the first, the first one in November? Set the meeting early?
We could certainly do that, if that's, works for your group.
What's anybody else think?
Wouldn't this be done during what we call a work session?
That sounds fun.
Mm-hmm.
We, we'd have a work session before our first month of meeting.
Okay, but for transparency, would we have PB Cam here?
We could make sure they came half an hour early, if we started at six.
Yeah.
I mean, I agree, we should be transparent.
Such a longstanding lease, I think, the public deserves.
Yeah, absolutely.
Any changes or updates there for me to do?
So, it, just check and see if, if that would work for your, um, group, if we could meet at six o'clock at our next meeting, and we can check and make sure PB Cam is available to start.
That's the fifth?
It's October fifth, yeah.
No, November.
November, yes, the day before Election Day.
Yeah.
So, six PM, November fifth?
Yeah. And then, if we need any further follow-up, we still have time to do it. So I thi, I think we'll schedule, even though it's not a real work session, but, uh, to Harold's point, I think it would be nice if it were filmed.
Hmm.
Good, okay.
Yep. Uh, building permit fees, um, we put those, uh, proposed new fees, they're in your, uh, copies in your folder.
Oh, okay, yeah, all right. So I would suggest that we review these, um, before our next meeting?
Oh, you picked them up, okay, I didn't have one today.
Little public hearing.
Yeah. Hmm? Well, look at the fees, yeah, just look at the fees.
We need to discuss them first, before we have a public hearing.
And then we'll, you know, maybe next meeting, we'll schedule the public hearing.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. Uh, other than that, no updates unless there's any further questions.
Still another paid grant?
There's no updates.
There's no updates on any of them.
Oh, okay, I got, I heard that.
Okay, um, I, I noticed...
Wait a minute, I'm sorry.
What?
The Ashland Appreciation Day, we completed the task.
Oh, okay.
Did you ever take that off?
No, yeah. Well, it says no updates, yeah, cleanup, oh, yeah, it's completed.
Could, could you tell us a little bit about that, Kathleen, and who went?
Who went? I, I have been prior meetings, so, um, and it was...
Yeah, she mentioned it last...
Yeah, and a question was asked, was, DPW did quite a few, quite a bit of the prep work, and I was asked if they did it, were they paid overtime to do it? Craig, would you like to respond to that?
Oh, it was all done during the day.
Okay, thank you.
No overtime.
Thank you.
Uh, what I, what I heard afterwards was, it was a rainy day, and you couldn't do your normally scheduled tasks, so you took that opportunity to do it. So, there was no overtime, everything else was done by volunteers, and...
Great, thank you.
And...
Thank you, Craig.
Didn't take too much to clean the area up, and it looks a heck of a lot better. And there's a picnic table up there now.
Nice, wonderful.
And thanks to the volunteers also.
Um, before we move on to, uh, select board items, I noted in the packet, even though it wasn't on the agenda, that there are also minutes from October tenth, which we have neglected to approve.
No, that, um...
I didn't know you wanted to approve those today.
I thought we were gonna do it Wednesday.
You wanna do it Wednesday?
Yeah, I just passed them out today. You can, you want.
Okay, well, they were in the packet, I just didn't know.
Yeah, yeah, I put them in today.
We'll do it Wednesday then. Okay, uh, is there any other old business? Okay, um, select board items, social media policy. Um, it has come to our attention that certain things get noted, advertised, whatever, in various social media outlets, Facebook and whatnot. And, um, I think the board needs to have a policy, because there's certain things that got put on a page that not everybody has access to, et cetera, et cetera. We just need to make sure that we understand as a board how social media should and should not be used um, by any town groups. So, um, I think somebody, Kathleen, was it you that got a, a sample from another town?
The, um, Martine shared it with me, and I shared it with Charlie, and he, I believe you phoned one that probably would suit our needs, and, uh, he was gonna provide a draft for us to...
Yeah, we should probably do that, um, very soon.
Sure.
Um, because we, we've run into concerns and questions.
Yeah, it's not a place to post for a meeting, and it could fail the ninety-one A.
Right, absolutely.
And it's involved in a fundraiser, we wanna make sure the integrity of that site is protected.
Mm-hmm.
Um, there's various other entities within town that are using it, posting their information. There's no oversight, and, um, it doesn't take much for things to go right.
Go right, absolutely.
Also, they had so...
So, Charlie, if you could, um, send out those, uh...
I will.
Templates or those models, and we can kinda take a look at it.
Actually, we're kind of behind.
We are very much behind. I mean, this is today, this is today's world. Social media is a very important part of everybody's lives, so...
I was a little embarrassed, to be honest, when I, when I did a, um, a search, how many towns had them and have, have had them in place for quite a few years, and we have nothing, so...
Okay, so that's something that should become a high priority, I think. Okay, um, upcoming budget meetings.
Oh, um, that was on there, uh, to try to plan, and, and we got a lot done on the budget.
We did.
Uh, we have a budget meeting on Wednesday at nine AM, as a reminder. Um, I got the medical insurance numbers today, and I believe the Primex numbers were supposed to release today.
Uh, we just completed basically Anne's budget.
So on Wednesday, we might be able to finish preparation of the budget and send it on to the Budget Committee.
Okay, that's excellent.
So we might not, if things go well, we might not have, have to have another meeting for that.
So Wednesday, planning board?
Land use, land use, uh, and fire department.
Okay.
Yeah, and, uh, personnel administration, which is basically the medical insurance, the liability, uh...
Debt service is pretty easy to just push.
And the debt service, yeah, and the debt service.
Yeah, some of those are very easy, okay. Wonderful, let's, let's hope so. Um, Charlie, again, I wanna commend you for all the work you've done on the budget.
Yes.
Yeah.
You put a lot of time into it.
Should we show everyone?